Wait until I believe that we hear we will have one. There are a couple of people who are moving in and out today. We're on the council, so we do know that Mayor Procham has an excuse absence. But I believe that if we'll be coming with an excuse, then we wait till we get going. All right. Good morning, City of Durham. We are here in our committee room in City Hall, Chairman. Our time is nine oh three on June the eighth of twenty twenty-three. We are here for our budget work session, and at this time, we will call the room.
Morning, Madam Mayor and council members. Mayor O'Neil.
I am president.
Mayor Mayor Prochamp Middleton has a request and excuse absence for today. Uh, Councilmember Caballero.
I think she will be here later.
Councilmember Freeman.
The same for her as well.
Councilmember Holte Hyman.
President.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
We have a floor. We are ready to proceed. Good morning. I am the Director of the Attorney, Lieutenant.
Good morning, Mayor and Members of the Council. Christina Reardon, interim Budget Director, and I will just open up the budget work sessions. We are here as budget staff to kind of be a guide for you today. And, you know, kind of talk to any discussions or questions you may have today.
Also, good morning, Madam Mayor and Members of the Council, City staff. Thank you for clearing your calendars to be present today to continue down the path of budget preparation and budget adoption. Certainly, I would like to thank Christina Reardon, who's leading the team that is really behind much of the information gathering, analysis, providing the data that the council needs in order to make decisions. That is that is what our role and responsibility is. We look forward to continuing that today. And thank you, staff. Thank you, other leaders, and HR staff is in the back. So we're all here to provide what you need for this meeting.
Information gathering, analysis.
It's a delay. Actually, I went two places at once.
It's magical, wasn't it?
That's right. That wastes time.
Well, I do want to also take the opportunity to commend our staff for a good job so far. This is my second budget season this year, so I learn a lot. Doing these jobs, and I thank you for your expertise. I will open it up to my colleagues for questions that they may have this morning about where we are so far.
I do have, and I don't know. Good morning, everyone. If this is appropriate to say yes, because this is my second one too, just learning. Um, I do have a question about something that I was I would like to talk about about, um, maybe a consultant for a policy and procedures committee to help us to fine tune those policies and procedures so that we have an outside person that will be able to be to help us with, because our policies and procedures, I don't think for council have been redone since two twenty seventeen. And so I would like a consultant to help us to to gavenize that, to be able to get them up to date so that we are able to use those policy procedures in the way that we need to, because a lot of times I think we are interpreting them, and I want us to be able to have it to be more concise. And I don't know if that can come out. This will be something new. I just thought about it to come out of our city clerk's budget. I don't know if this is appropriate to ask right here. I'm just throwing it out.
Well, I do know that we've got to have a discussion at our work sessions afternoon about council policies and procedures. You know, I hope to try to make sure that we have the procedures that I think we lack on things that are outstanding to kind of focus in on there. But as far as a budget cost for that, I would have to, an outside consultant, I would have to defer to the city managers to put that process through.
So certainly, you know, we, you know, there's a wide range of, you know, what any consultant to do, any service for the city, will it cost the city, depends upon the scope of work that is developed. Typically, when we are creating a budget for a, you know, a scope of work, it comes from, you know, similar work that has happened in the past. Or we may do, you know, we may look, do some research ourselves as to what, you know, outside consultants, whether we are looking at the estimated number of hours, times an average hourly rate that a consultant would charge to do certain things. But we don't start out with a number, just a swag number that will be researched based upon the scope of the service that will be would be desired. Most of our consulting engagements are project based, so we don't necessarily put in the city's budget, you know, a recurring cost for those kinds of things. Those kinds of things are typically as needed, and they're one-time costs. So if an department, for example, as a consulting service for a project in this year's budget, when the budget department reviews their base budget for the following year, that service is no longer needed, and it is backed out. So that's probably more than you were looking for, but we do, we would not have any idea how much an amount would be, because we don't have any idea what the scope of the work would be.
Right, so I would consider it a one-time project. And I guess just the reason is because when I looked at some of, you know, they have not been updated, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, since two twenty seventeen. And we do have a, I guess, a procedures committee, but I just felt that we probably need to honestly see what is out there in terms of what other municipalities are doing, in terms of what's best practice, because to me, it just seems like there's a lot of loopholes in the policies and procedures that we have. So I just felt that I wanted to to kind of bring that up to my colleagues.
Councilwoman Williams.
Are you requesting this outside of the city's attorney's office? Because normally, wouldn't they come from the city's attorney's office?
Good morning, Members of the Council. Um, yes, so the council procedures, um, the last draft that I had, they were amended in twenty twelve. I think there were some travels tinkering in twenty seventeen, perhaps. I think you're right, Councilmember Holte Hyman. But they were originally devised and developed by the city attorney's office with instruction and guidance from the UNC School of Government, which comes out with a model council procedures guide. And we have been preparing. We have some great law students with us this summer, and we're hoping we could do a lot of that research and backgrounding for you over the summer with the acknowledgement that the council wanted to see some modifications to the procedures. But we are able and willing and available to do that work.
Okay, because I just know that it's been, like you said, I thought it was two thousand seventeen, which was still kind of outdated.
Yeah, and I'm not aware that they've ever had a wholesale update. They have been, when you look at the cover page, the council procedures, and it says revised on, those are slight amendments. They are not a complete rewrite of the policies and procedures, and I don't recall that that's ever been done with either of my two predecessors, so going back at least twenty years.
I'm just concerned about some of the loopholes that I see in the policies and procedures and the way that some people interpret it, right?
Sure.
I don't want this to happen. Well, it happened to me. I don't want it to happen to another one of my colleagues that things are interpreted one way, it's not the way it's supposed to be. That that's just, to me, is unprofessional. And so I just want us to be able to have guidelines that are updated, where it is no loopholes, and it's like, well, you interpret it one way, I interpret it another way. That's not, to me, professional leadership business. And so that's really my concern.
I understand. Um, I would say that there aren't necessarily loopholes in the council procedures so much as there are just a number of issues and subject matters that's not addressed.
Okay, yeah, that too.
And and that's true of many council procedures across the state, but we can certainly be more comprehensive if that is the will of the council.
And I think we'll probably have more of a discussion this afternoon, and then we can decide what the scope is. But I have been talking with Attorney Rayburg about things that I think are outstanding and pretty much have not been addressed and cannot be addressed with the procedures that we have now. So we'll have a further discussion, and she's already talked about that she will have a white paper done by the end of the summer for the procedures committed to consider. So we'll have a more robust discussion about that this afternoon, and I thank you for thinking about the monetary part of it. And I think that she, much Attorney Rayburg explains pretty much where they are and what they're doing, we'll get a good idea of whether we'll be a consultant or not. I kind of doubt, I think they may be able to handle at least the initial part of it. And then it goes to the committee, and you'll find that committee, I believe.
Yeah, I asked to be.
So you all make a determination as to what you'll need after you get guidance from from our attorney.
Thank you, thank you for that, because I just was a little concerned about, I know, I thought it was two thousand seventeen, and two thousand twelve is, yeah, so I appreciate that update. I do have another. Um, I wanted to just open discussion for my colleagues to talk about the step amounts for our fire firefighters, and wanted to see if we can talk about that conversation, open that conversation again. I know we've had a lot of conversation about it. I'm still trying to understand the steps and all of this and and but I do, I am very passionate about trying to bring the right to whatever steps or whatever increase that the firefighters, I feel, need. So I would like to open that conversation for my colleagues.
And I too echo that we need to have a conversation, but I think I'm looking at a broad audience in terms of not just our firefighters, but also our police and all those who were affected back back in twenty twenty-one with the, when the step increase was paused for COVID. I did have extensive conversations with our city manager yesterday. It is still a very complex issue, but on the bottom line, I think it's the number that she told me on yesterday, in order to make some corrective action in that vein as we wait for this study, turns out to be about eight million dollars, I think it's about seven.
So, yeah, so, so, Mayor, let me just be very clear about the number that we're talking about, and I know that this meeting is scheduled for, you know, pretty, pretty large period of time, but, and I don't want to say too many words, but in the very first follow-up information that we provided the council, there were, there the the projected cost for employees who were present in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, when raises in the terms of steps identified as steps were not provided, that number was calculated. So for the twenty twenty-one year, it was approximately seven point nine, and I believe for twenty twenty-two, it was eight, it was a little over eight.
Eight point eight.
Eight point eight.
Almost eight point nine.
Eight, almost eight point nine. So the reason those two amounts are different is because every time we actually make calculations, you know, they are impacted by other decisions that have been made and, you know, salaries at that time compared to, you know, salaries in the next fiscal year. So, but overall, for both those years, for all city employees who were present and who were working during the COVID pandemic, when decisions were being made based upon conditions and the the lack of, you know, knowledge about what was going to happen in the future, those decisions were made with with those conditions in mind. But we can always go back and make calculations as to what the amounts would have been, and so that's what we provided. So it was almost seventeen million dollars across all of our pay plans, and that's what we presented to you in our in our update. So when you say, you know, approximately eight, that's closer to twenty twenty-one.
Right.
Twenty twenty-two was an amount that was almost closer to nine.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that. Colleagues.
Councilwoman Williams. I I don't want this to appear as a conversation about support versus not support. And I don't want to use technical language such as, you know, a balanced budget to where it's so impersonal that it doesn't seem like we're talking about people. But what I do want to make very clear is I support our staff, our city employees. I've expressed this to our firemen as well. This conversation, like, when I believe when I first got on council, Mayor Neil and I, the conversation at the time was specifically about first responders, and we took action. And now this conversation is much broader. This conversation is about the entire enterprise. And as tough as it may be, part of our responsibility is to be fiscally responsible. And I just want to make sure that I'm very clear about what I committed. What I committed was looking deep into this and understanding as much as possible these how these numbers work, understanding from a professional point of view as well as a personal point of view as a victim of compression. When I was a teacher in two thousand and eight, when everyone across the state salaries froze for years, and, you know, I started out teaching with thirty-two thousand dollars a year, and now teachers are starting out close to fifty. What has been missing in this entire conversation is the the increase in pay over the last few years. And we have to make sure that we're being very clear about the dollar amount increasing. And then what our fire firemen are also, or let's say our staff are also concerned about, which is the value of the step. So it's been, it's been really technical language, and a lot of folks don't really understand it. So what happens is the receipt of a very surface comment of, we don't pay our staff, we don't care, has been delivered and received. And then you'll get folks saying, hey, why aren't you paying your firefighters? It's everyone across the city that did not get a step increase. And I want us to be very clear about what we are asking for when we say the entire enterprise, because we also can't say we don't want to raise taxes if this is going to happen. And I, what I committed was, I will make sure that the support is there to, you know, make sure that we are, are, are at, is that time for me to shut up?
No.
All right. I will make sure that the support, that my support is present for the increase in pay, and I would make sure that we utilize the study to determine how we can get everyone to the appropriate step. And I think that, I do think it will be, after after we raised last year, the bonuses, I do not know how we're going to not raise taxes and also bring everyone up to the appropriate step right now. I I don't know how we're going to make that happen. That doesn't mean that the support isn't there. It just simply means that doing things in a timely and successive way to where we can still make sure that we are pricing folks out of the city at, 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 you know, I don't want to say cost of impatience, but, you know, putting the cart before the horse. I think that our firemen have bought the issue to the forefront for us, and I think that we have to, we have to follow that lead, just like we've taken lead from the community members on environmental standards, and I think that we're going to get there. So I just want to make sure that the conversation is binary about, you know, some support the firefighters and some don't, or some support the staff and some don't. I think everybody on council does. I think that part of that tough decision is how we're going to be fiscally responsible while doing it and addressing the needs that that we are hearing as well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'll just share a few thoughts. I think that it's clear that our firefighters need to make more money and that a lot of the folks in our organization, in addition to our firefighters, both need and deserve increases in order to keep up with the cost of living and also because, because it's entirely warranted to to reward folks for the work that they do. Our firefighters have been especially effective advocates for this, which has, you know, centered them in the conversation, which is, which is, you know, as it should be. But I also, you know, again, as Councilmember Williams said, we have a lot of other people who didn't get raises during those two years of COVID. And you, and not just the folks who were on step plans, right? Like, everyone who's in the open range also didn't get raises. It's harder to sort of define that as being behind, because the steps are more clearly delineated. But we, you know, we suspended raises for financial reasons because the resources weren't there, and I don't have the sense that the resources are there now either without, again, a tax increase. It's funny for me to, you know, how we have to talk about tax increases here, because I'm like a tax and spend liberal, and I love taxes. But the problem that we have here in Durham is that we aren't able to implement any kind of actually progressive tax system. All of our, all of the taxes that we have access to are flat. So our property tax rate is a flat tax, our sales tax is a flat tax, and actually, we max that out. So there isn't, there is no way for us to ensure that the funding for our city's needs comes predominantly from those who are most able to pay. It hits everyone at the same rate, which means that the folks who are least able to pay are actually disproportionately impacted. And so I want to be clear that it's not, it's not like an objection to raising taxes in a general sense that I have. It's the concern that our, that our lower income communities are disproportionately impacted by our taxation system because of our restrictions from from the state of North Carolina. And that's why we have things like, you know, our property tax relief program, but of course we know that that's not enough and that people are, you know, being actively displaced in this community and raising taxes, raising the cost of housing. So we have, you know, I feel like this is a very, it's hard to balance these two, these two concerns, right? We need to pay our employees fairly. We also need to be aware of the burden that city operations places on our residents overall and especially on our lowest income residents. I think that the plan to do a pay study and figure out where our firefighter salaries and other public safety salaries need to be to be competitive is the right way forward. I think our city management is committed to moving that pay study as quickly as possible. I think it would be reasonable to apply some of those changes retroactively, but I don't feel comfortable moving forward without, I don't feel comfortable moving forward now without a plan. I think there should be a plan. I think there should be a plan very soon, and I think that our folks absolutely deserve increases and should get them. And even if that does require a raising taxes, I would support that once we have, once we have a clearer plan as to where, as to where we're going and how we're moving. And again, you know, the city is growing, so we do have growth every year that we can also factor in, but for this year, we've already factored that into our current budget. In our, in our, you know, in future budget years, we can apply some of the, some of the growth to raise. I mean, we always do a I mean, we always do apply some of the growth to raises, but we can continue to do that. The city is an enterprise, just like, you know, every other enterprise in this country is dealing with the inflation that we're seeing right now across the country, is dealing with limited resources, and governments just have limited resources. And our resources come from us collectively. Public money is from all of us, and I don't want us to, I don't want us to be redistributing wealth in ways that actually harm our community. We need to think pretty carefully about how we impose taxes and then how we apply them. So I, I think that, you know, we're, we're in a position right now. I am absolutely concerned about people, about public safety staff leaving the city. I think it's been made very clear to us that folks are unhappy, that people are disappointed, that they're not making what they need to, and that we're going to lose people. And so I want, so I want this work done as quickly as we possibly, as we possibly can. And I know that our administration is already prioritizing this, like, this is absolutely at the top of their list. But I don't think that it would be responsible to add money to the budget without, without a plan. We could add some money to it that we know is going to be applied to a future plan, like, if we decided we needed to do something. But we needed some wiggle room in there for, for retroactive raises mid-year or something like that. But I don't, I want us to know exactly where we're going before we step out. Thanks.
Mayor Neil, I just wanted to make a question. I have a bad habit of speaking loosely, and I said firemen. You guys are cool, but you're not the only ones. I would like to correct your record to say firefighters. My apologies.
I, I, first of all, I respect my colleagues' comments. And I think, as you said, Councilmember Williams, like, we all, it's not a matter of whether you support or not support, like, so that is not at all, because I know we all do. I think my concern is, and I understand the waiting for the study, my concern is that they've been waiting for a while. Now, again, I'm only getting on here here, and I know that they've had these conversations come up before, and they've been waiting, and it hasn't been according to what I have been told when I met with some of our city's fire persons. So I'm just concerned about, I guess, how fast we can get this done. I'm concerned about when I have people in the community that are calling me and saying that, you know, in some of their areas, that they're not getting some of the firemen out there, you know, because it's not enough people to cover certain things. I just want to make sure that our people in Durham are just getting the services that they need to. And I just, and I'm just really concerned about a lot of them also moving and leaving. Because again, as I can see you to say, I think that we train the best city employees here. And when I'm looking at some of the, because I've done my own research about just some of, you know, where people are moving to and why they're moving. It's about salary, it's about the fact that they can't afford to live in Durham. That upsets me. And so I really respect my colleagues' concerns and what they're saying, and I definitely agree. But I just wish we could do something a little faster, to be quite honest. It's my opinion.
And, you know, I'm going to weigh in a little bit on my thoughts as well about this. You know, we've heard a time and time again from firefighters as I've gone out across the city. I've also heard more from police officers and others who were in that same band. I think there's, there is a balance that has to be had. I'm just not sure that it's balanced in a way that we cannot look at things in a different light. Right before we got on the council, before I got on the council, and I've heard this too, and so we have to kind of look at what people are saying. The council raised their salaries. And they need to be, and probably need to be more at this point, based on what I'm working and how I'm working. We've raised salaries for our employees as well over the last year. We can find money for things that we want to find. We found $10 million for Haiti, they definitely deserve it. We've also allocated some other funds. We have $2 million in participatory budgeting. You have other ways that you've been able to find money. And so I know, based on the conversation that we have now with the others, persons here, that we're probably not going to get the four votes needed. I'm not opposed to a tax increase when it comes to protecting those who work for us. I'm one of those that we sweep around our own front door first, take care of home first. And our citizens that I've talked, talked to folk in all of those areas, including the low-income areas, would like to see our city workers in a place where their morale is not being diminished. So I think there's a holistic look that we can have and find it's about $7 million, $8 million within our budget. But I'm not willing to go down there knowing fully well that we're not going to get those four votes. And I do not, I have to be honest, I do not think we're going to get four votes for that raise or a tax increase or the consideration of looking. So the thing that I would hope that we would do is to see how fast that we can get the, and you can't really do this work fast in terms of the study. But I will ask that our, that we make a commitment at least to consider retroactive payments if necessary, if that is there. I'm willing, like I said, at this point, I'm willing to consider a tax increase today. But so I am also willing to consider some type of retroactive when we get to that point after the study. So I don't want to spend a whole lot of time trying to go back and forth when the reality is that we're not going to get those four votes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to make sure that we are talking about the same thing. If Madam Manager, you can correct it from wrong. It's about the step. The step has a value, and part of the value is beyond a dollar figure because we've given money. It's still not enough, but the money has been there, the money can always be found. And part of how we've been able to do what we're doing now is because of the expansion of the tax base. We have more people moving here and more people paying taxes. But what happens, which this is, when it gets personal regarding our firefighters, is the step affects the bottom line when it comes to retirement, pension, and those matters. The dollar figure, it's, you can have a bonus, and it's one time, and it doesn't really do anything to give you a little more money then. But the step really moves your entire status. Is that the correct understanding of that? Maybe messing it up here.
I need to make a slight clarification. A step is, doesn't mean any, it really means very little without saying what that step actually does when it happens. So in the case of the city's step plans, which we have three step plans, and one open range plan and a part-time plan here in our, in our salary pay classification study. So a, a step right now in our organization, it needs a 5% increase over, you know, during a operating year that is added to base pay to, so that that employee has that base amount of pay for the next raise. So whether it is achieved through a step or through some other type of permanent raise, it is still that employee's salary. The North Carolina Local Government Employees Retirement System bases retirement benefits and other types of benefits on actual average salary because all organizations don't have step plans or they don't, or the steps may be valued at different percentages. So that is not a, is a slight, you know, edit to what you're saying.
Got you. So, yeah, I was just trying to clarify between the bonus and the raise.
Yes. So a bonus, a bonus is a one-time amount, does not add to base in the year that someone is, if it's earned income in the year that someone, you know, maybe have a salary year that's being calculated, it would count as income earned during that year. But, you know, it is, it doesn't add to base. So if it doesn't add to base, the next time we get an increase, then that bonus, you know, is not calculated in that, in that raise. So there is a difference between a bonus and a permanent raise that adds to base. But that can be achieved through a 5% adjustment, through a step increase, or some other type of adjustment, which we are planning to do this year in this proposed budget, which is not adopted. But every employee in the proposed budget is expected to receive a minimum of 7% added to their base, 6%, between 6% and 8%. But public safety employees will all receive 7% because there will be a 2% increase to the step that they currently own. And we are proposing that they also receive an additional 5% as part of the pay plan implementation.
Right, and I think that's where it gets a little wonky for everyone to understand because the money is there. It is coming, that the percentage increase is coming.
That's correct. Any further discussions?
All right, seeing none, welcome, and thank you all today to this last of our budget work hearing sessions. I think that we will be ready to pass the budget on time on June 20th. And we will have a work session this afternoon at 1:00. That will be our last work session before the break. And then once we pass the budget on June 20th, the council will be on break for some, for the summer. Anything further?
I do not. We, you know, you don't have anything further for us?
Seeing none, we are here by adjourned on, at 9:37 on June the 8th. Before we do that, oh, I'm sorry. Let us entertain an excused absence for Councilwoman Freeman and Councilwoman Cabella.
So move.
It's been moved in properly, second that we allow the absences of our colleagues to be excused absence, all those in favored groups. Sign my saying aye. Aye, all of those opposed have the same, aye, hearing none. We are hereby adjourned.